Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.
Punishment notice from Health Equity, their third-party benefits administrator. So based on the claims that are coming in for folks seeking health care, it's just kind of revolving money in, money out. So we deposit the money in once a year and then it just slowly comes out throughout the course of the year. So that was a change from draft one. I did get the notice in from Vermont Treasurer's office that the assessment that the employer has to pay for teachers that are new to teacher retirement after July 1 of 15th, I was off by nine bucks. So now 1,500, it's 1,509 next year. So I fixed that as well. And that's really the difference that you're seeing from draft one to draft two. And I think initial had us at what 3.83% increase. And this one has us down at 2.86. So what has, I mean, everything is still in. I know that there was some concern about some of the asks for positions. So we can discuss that tonight. You can give me some direction if you want things in, out, or not. Kind of across the board. We have had a couple of other asks for teaching staff that sometimes is supported through grants. So one in particular, the math teacher here for Shrewsbury. And another district asked for another similar position in reviewing with Laura. She feels that we can probably support a shared position. So as to not put that strain on the local budget this year because we do have grant funds. So, you know, the ESSR funds that we can use because we do have interventionists written into that grant. We can probably use that to reduce some of the pressure on the local budget, but it would be shared amongst.
So can I ask you a question now about that or did you want to continue?
To wait. That's really kind of the bulk. I mean, I have other stuff and we can start talking about revenue and tax rates and stuff. But I mean, really the responsibility of the board is to, you know, give you direction on the expenditure budget and what you want to see.
In the Shrewsbury ask, this is add a math teacher. Does that make it two math teachers?
Oh, okay.
One elementary, one higher. And I think we've been asking this since pre-merger of the board. I think we've always asked for a math teacher. It's been shot, it's been always.
The one, yeah, so it finally, finally made it through and had it for a couple of years.
Yep.
And Jeff said that that, the current position is supporting K12. The new position he would want would support grades three through six.
So do we have any data to support how that K12, how this is working out? Whether or not this is having the impact that he had hoped it would have?
Yeah, I wanted to say, you know, from being at Shrewsbury last year, you know, I think it was, I think they did see an increase in math numbers. But they've never had a pro math interventionist in K12.
And then I guess my other question was, and I had this before, is how does the date, what does the day look like? Because if those children, is it, are they, is it a pullout? Is it A?
I think it's a pullout, if I remember right. It's just like the reading interventionist, they have elementary ed reading and math. And there's only a region up to levels.
So how's that impact there? So they get pulled out specifically?
Same as reading intervention.
And so do you see where I'm going with this? So then?
But I mean, I think that happened in all of the schools. You know, all those kids are pulled out from, you know, the tier two, that's important somewhere.
So Sandy, is your concern, is your question, what are the students missing when they get pulled out?
They are definitely missing.
Yeah.
Because it's so.
Sure, yeah.
Yes, absolutely, that's part of it. And then the other part of it is, is there another way to look at this that could help all the students? And, you know, maybe do something just structured a little bit differently.
And so is the question a matter of expenditure with regard to the budget? Or is it a matter of like, I guess what I'll call like deployment of persons?
All of them. I think it's all.
Is, I think the point's at the every school across the district. So as if it's a in-class time, then, you know, intervention should not be, you know, you can't use it correctly. But if I'm running intervention, probably, I mean, every kid's getting pulled for 15, 20 minutes of intervention to make up decent test scores.
So does that work is my question? And if it doesn't, what, where, can we look outside the?
That's a big philosophy number.
Well, can we, can we rethink what we're doing and how we're doing it?
So does intervention work?
No, 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 that doesn't work. Is there another way that we could look at this funding that we have available? The, the number of talented individuals that we have in our schools now? Is there?
Ms. Watson, it said she can clarify.
Yeah, I mean, she's a Katie. She's a ref. Yeah, she's, she's interventionist, she could explain maybe.
Um, so it's my job. So, um, even though that's not why I'm here. Um, so we do a mix of push-in and pull-out at Shrewsbury. Um, with intervention, with math intervention currently. Um, and our schedule is set up. We made a master schedule that has three blocks for reading and math, small group, whole group, and co-teaching or intervention so that nobody that is getting intervention is being pulled out of first instruction. So is that what you were asking, Sandy?
That's part of it, yes. That is part of it.
Okay.
And I, I guess the other part is we don't know where we stand yet. Or or the, you know, where we are overall for scores. We just don't.
Well, I mean, I think that's a diverse question we've asked in the past. Where, what data we have that says how many kids are proficient? Not proficient below basic and we're not seeing that data. Is that what you're asking?
Oh, that's just a part of the whole. It's just a part of the whole. Like this is a lot more money and perhaps this is the right direction.
Yep.
Yeah, but I, I don't have that information. And so I feel like whether we do or don't support it, either way, I don't feel like I have all of the information.
Yes.
To make that.
So if I guess from a vacant point, so somebody gave and said, we have the fourth fairs in any school, we'll talk about Shrewsbury. There 45% of the kids are proficient. 55 are below basic. You know, that'd be enough data to say, you know, this is a poor position because majority of the kids are below basic for that amount. We're looking for data like that is actually looking for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Something.
So something.
Support this need. To support the need, to support this base chunk of money.
So Superintendent Culkin, when Principal Johnson made the request for the additional math staff member, do you have to recall, maybe you can, maybe I'll back it up a little bit. Can you please outline for us what's the, when a principal makes, makes an ask, a staffing ask for their school? Is there a process of sort of justifying that request to you as part of the process? Or how was, how was this explained, this particular request?
So I was not involved in the process. He made the request to the Director of Finance. So he did not make the request to either the, to the superintendent or the vice president, it's not, are the assistants superintendent, it's not that he necessarily avoided us. Um, it is a, an issue in the rush to do budgets that the assistants superintendent and I talked about how probably should have been a level before it came to the board that it came for our review. I'm sorry, I, I missed the beginning of the conversation because I, I had an emergency call from one of our other schools. Um, so we're, we're talking about, uh, the reading teacher? Is that what we're talking about?
The second, second math teacher that Jeff requested at Shrewsbury. Yep.
Yeah.
So I guess my stance is, Sandy.
My review would be like, you know, whiz, what's the equity? What, what do we have at other schools? What is the, um, and is this something that we could do more at a district level, at the SU level and share resources with everyone? Cause, um, the, the way the budget goes, um, and as I'm, as I'm learning, uh, as this process continues, I, I think an improvement that we needed, and I, you know, Renee's got so much on her plate. But, um, she shouldn't else be making educational decisions. It should be more about, you know, financial decisions. And, um, not that I wasn't invited to the meetings, but it's almost impossible for us to make, you know, all, you know, all these budget meetings with the principals. Uh, I think if I'm looking to change the process next year, I think all the principals should meet first. And, um, and like what type of proposals are going across, um, the district, because it seems like, you know, some principals are better advocates than others. Some don't know to ask and some do and some, um, so I, I am concerned about the inequity of it.
But we have, but we have intervention or tier one in other buildings. Like I think of Monument, they have a full reading, full math interventionist, if I remember right.
They have one, um, they have a reading, um, teacher. It's not, it's the one title funded, um, they have a point five, excuse me.
Okay.
They have a point five title-funded math interventionist and they have a reading teacher, which is not a title-funded position.
But their scores they're looking at close to 7% proficient for math and English.
Oh, have their, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's pre-COVID scores. That's what their, that's what their goal was to meet is 7% proficient.
When she, oh, her CIP goal, when she shared.
Yeah. So I mean, her, her, it looks like they're a higher performing school. They've always been a higher performing school. So that would say you don't need a much of a need. But, you know, if they look at math and interventionist that Molly started in Benel, which lower, lower performing schools, where are the numbers there looking?
We don't know they're lower performing. That's.
Well, past data is the same progress.
Okay.
You know, I can say angle pre-COVID data.
Okay.
You know? So I mean, but I mean, if you look at, right now, we know that they're significantly higher than non-proficient students.
So let me ask, let me phrase the question this way. So what we're told from the superintendent and board members, we're hearing about the days that this process could be done differently. Whether it's the, the manner in which the way the asks are made and whether it's the providing board with, or the right information for us to make the right decision. So since these are process questions, what I would propose is this, that we, since, since the Director Gordon has laid out what it's going to look like if all of the asks are met. And it seemed to me anyway, it seems reasonable, that we move forward with what has been given to us today. But we make the specific ask of the superintendent or the assistant superintendent to make adjustments to the process moving forward. So that next budget season, we're not at this stage of things, asking for a different process to be made. Then instead we use the intervening year to develop the right process so that we can come up with a, with a good budget.
Um, that's absolutely fair, absolutely. There were some other asks as well that, um, like the increase for the assistant principal in Shrewsbury and Powell. Um, and my question at the time was how much time is the Shrewsbury principal out of the building to cover the Woodford School? And would it be, if we're going to add that money, would it be better just to hire someone for that school? And I don't know the answer to that. And that was something that we, he, he wasn't sure about at the time. Makes sense. Um, so that's a significant increase as well. If, if we're going to accept these asks. And then of course the equity of the, um, pairs that are in the, in Benel and Molly. And whether, like.
What makes it, what makes the equitable across the board for all the schools?
And what's the difference? The question that I often ask myself is what is the difference? What is equity and what is equal? Right, what, what is, what is, what is equal? What do equal resources look, look like versus an equitable?
There is a difference.
Yeah. Like I, I'm thinking of the, uh, the image I once saw about the three people trying to watch the ballgame through the fence.
Yes.
Of different heights and they all get the same box. It doesn't mean they can all look through, so they're equal but not equitable. For those of you who've seen the image, it makes perfect sense, but I'm not describing it very well. For those of you who haven't seen the image.
I know the, I know the, I know the drawing.
It sounds like what Sanders proposes is before we start moving forward and ending positions, you know, make sure we have data to back up justification. It's like when I see the safety need for non-score IP murders in Benel. Why do we need them? You want to know the reason why is there's been 28 fights this year and, you know, 58 expulsions of non-NIP students. If you can use that data back up, then you have this information. Or you use like, um, I always just call in the schools like the room that go to reset themselves, whatever those terms are.
Yeah, I, we saw this, yeah. Resource adjustments.
Resourceer, reset.
I'm just mean center is like, yeah, like, yeah, there's a wellness center.
So if we use that data to say there's been 500 referrals at Benel and Shrewsbury, then maybe Shrewsbury doesn't need those six pairs, Benel doesn't.
But in his perception, maybe he feels he does.
Yes.
Does that make sense?
But the data makes it more justified.
And maybe if we have a new principal in a school like Powell, because she's brand new.
Yep.
Maybe she doesn't, she just may not have that knowledge that he has.
So look at data versus just, okay. I think I'm okay with that.
But I can tell you that we test them.
I was gonna say, isn't there a process that go, that is followed? Well, is there a process that's followed to get to the point where things are, where these asks have added to this list? And pressure testing and cutting and removing and adding?
I do have those conversations with, with the principals when, when they ask, like, you know, it, is it a body that you need? Is there, you know, a way that you can use the resources that you have? And as the discussions that I had with each of the principals that had the asks, they had rationale as to why. Now, like, uh, Benel was specific for student supports because they, you know, have seen an uptick in behaviors and trauma. But I think.
What, what Beth was seeing in Powell, along with those same things, was that absenteeism has been high. So she's taking folks that have assignments, like her, her special education pair. She's having to take them and re, put, you know, put them in a classroom because she's short-staffed. So.
Oh, you mean staff absentee, not students.
Staff absentee.
Yeah. So, yeah, there are, you know, numerous people out, you know, whether it's teachers' parents, whatnot, in, in all of our elementary schools. So I feel like, you know, and some of them even came in and said, can I have a full-time substitute? And I'm like, we've tried that before. Probably not gonna, not gonna work. Um, but if you need somebody to provide coverage, you know, you're, you'll be able to get a person in there and provide flexibility and support using a parent position. So, you know, those kinds of conversations we, we did have. And I, you know, had to help guide them, like what I think is gonna, you know, maybe pass buster versus what, you know, what won't. But, but they're supposed to come in and tell me like, what do you need to run your building? For you to be successful, what do you feel you need? And then I put it in. And what is the?
That is the guidance that we give them. Tell them to put, you know, you can't get what you don't ask for. And if you don't ask for it, we don't know what you, what, what you think you need. And we don't ask them to cut. That comes when it comes to the board.
So I think in Molly, there has, um, with the shift in how many class sections they have. There was one that was able to be reduced one year and they haven't expanded that backup. So that position has been there in the budget, but not filled. So she wants to reallocate that.
What is the, um, so where are the numbers heading for student enrollment as you predict them in the future?
Um, the incoming, incoming case looks consistent. Like I'm, I'm not saying like a sharp decline.
And, and the, there isn't, um, title funding for a reading teacher in Molly?
They do have interventionist.
Not necessary?
I'm not, I don't know what you're looking at.
Um, so there's a request to change a basic classroom teacher to a reading teacher, but they're not asking it to be a title-funded, they're asking it to be in the budget.
So. So because, so it was a request, so just as a reminder, the way the title money works, we're, we're not sure year to year because it's also on an annual basis. Um, the money that we receive is based on the data that we submit to the state. So we won't know our, um, what our funding will look like until March probably. And then we will do the same thing that we're doing now. Um, we'll meet with each principal based on, um, the, the money that's allotted. And so it is possible, you're correct. In this moment right now, I can't, I can't say that there's money for next year's budget because the title money is, is a, is a, a one-year grant. Um, and it, it varies not drastically, but from, from year to year. So it is possible. It is, it is possible that there will be enough money there and it could be some restructuring between title one and title two in their grant. So that's a great idea.
I, I guess that's where I have the issue with these. So like we keep adding these positions, it's just chunkier and chunkier. Um, and as I looked through the budget that was just sent in, the regular one for the meeting, there is $198,000 in lines that have not been used throughout all of the schools, not any one in particular. And so we already have that $198,000 that hasn't been touched at all this year. That will be rolled into next year, the year after, the year after. And it seems that we don't need to. I guess that's my thought on this is that if we have columns that we haven't used.
Drop them.
I don't know. Uh, yeah.
Is, is the, it's, it's a, a total of $198,000, should I?
It's about.
Okay. We get, yeah, sure, sure.
I, I haven't highlighted my split of pages. Sorry, the budget stat report?
Yeah, the one that you send out for tonight's meeting. I started looking through it to see where we are in the year, what the percentage is left. It's just. I think another thing to think about through the lens of grants because right now we have, we have access to title and ESSR funding. And one, something that, you know, we are always cautious of, we try to always use our grant money first. Um, and we want to be careful that, um, we're not supplanting. So we want to keep everything in a grant. So, and again, grant money is so, um, it's, it's not, it's not consistent. So I think sometimes we make plans not knowing what our grant funding is going to be because that's always very nerve-wracking. So some of that is what you're seeing. Because again, we always try to use our grant money first, so we're in custody. We want to use our grant money first because we're gonna, if this money's coming to our community. But there, it's, it's not a stone. So I think we always want to make sure we have, for some of the things I'm sure you're seeing is, um, backup plans just in case the grant money doesn't come through or, or something is, um, more expensive than, than we anticipated. But again, trying to use the grant money first. So again, some of the things you see on that list that you had highlighted very well could be things we could tie. So, um.
But we can always roll that money over like we don't.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Or in that, just say next year, we're just going to approve the, whatever we built. It can be, you know, it's last year, back to cover.
Right.
So, you know, there's that nice flex because we knew for three years we didn't roll it, two years?
I thought it just kind of. Unbalanced.
Unbalanced, yeah.
Just keep rolling, doesn't it?
Yeah, it, it rolls. And I mean, really, we should be using it and then it's the leftover from the previous year. But we did last year and actually I can attest that we, we took a chunk out and put it into a reserve.
Yep.
So it's, um, it's made in revenue. Do you have the amount for each, the last three years? Or may we, that we have received in title funding so that we know just how far off it fluctuates? Because we don't want to be short, we absolutely don't want to be short.
Yeah, I think with the ESSR one, that just throws up the.
I think it's fair though.
A big tidal wave.
So many variables. Aren't they different though?
Oh, yeah, they're totally different.
Sandy, can you just repeat that ask again? I, I did just, I hear you.
Just have the three-year, what have we received in the last three years?
Well, title fund.
Just so we can see how far off it is because we don't want to be short. You're absolutely right, we don't want to be short spent.
Sure.
So maybe you brought that part of the budget is doing a rolling like three-year, what's, what's tied up for the last few years? So at least you, you never know with the feds.
Well, I, I think that's exactly, and so I'm reminded of, I don't know. Speaking a lot in metaphors and I'm not describing very well, but like, so much like I didn't do a great job explaining the guy who's trying to watch the ballgame. I'm, I'm like, I'm thinking of how casinos have to have enough cash on hand to cover all the chips on the table. That you just never, you'd never know when all, when you're going to pay out on all of the chips that are out there. And I'm envisioning this very much like this. I told you it was terrible before I even started talking.
No, you're a gambler.
So, and I'm not a gambler. But anyway, but so it just strikes me that this is, it, it may be, it may be good information to have in terms of how much, uh, how much has been covered by title funding versus how much has been, had, been covered by, by Vermont taxpayers. But I'm, I'm thinking that, that it almost doesn't matter because we, because there's no guarantee what the feds are going to come up with. It's, we, we still need to be able to cover those chips that are on the table, that are there on the floor. And so we need to have this money allocated in the budget. Or in case.
We need the cash on hand.
We need the cash on hand.
Which is like a hospital, need the cash on hand just in case you're going to shut down for a month. You don't have 30 days cash on hand, hospital shutting down in 30 days.
Yeah.
It always ended at a jax. So, but how much cash on hand do we need? That's the big question.
Well, and I guess I'm, I'm satisfied with the work that Director Gordon or stuff, you know, to, to figure that part of it out.
But like I said, I mean, based on the, the funds that we have available, that we know that we have for one more year, we feel like that, you know, that position at Shrewsbury and/or even maybe Molly, you know, could be supported through a grant for one year. Or, you know, coming, coming into your local budget.
So if I understand correctly, that is the, that is what would happen before it went to, like that money would come out first to, from the ESSR or from the title or from that funding before it came from?
The taxpayers.
Well, it's always from the taxpayers.
Right, it's, it's, it's local taxpayers, you're right.
But I didn't have, I didn't have that conversation with any of the principals about what they may or may not be able to get into a grant, you know, next year. Besides what they, they typically have.
Because the grant fund and title funds have to use. And then what we did last year, we have all this excess funds. That's when we allotted 3 million back to the taxpayers, dropped the budget numbers down. So, you know, that's where we use that bonus money two or three years down the road. So, cause it's reduced the tax cost because it's the right thing to do.
Yeah, so even looking at, um, the, the fund balance for '24 was available. It's even an uptick from what we had last year. But we have a lot of factors that are working against us this year. We are seeing a, a slow decline in our equalized pupils. And that whole calculation is slated to change based on the waiting study that UVM did in FY '25. So we might, you know, I don't know if it's going to happen. Like we weren't sure if Act 173, the, the funding for special education was actually going to happen. It didn't. But the, what we know in equalized pupils could look very different when we're budgeting for FY '25 next year. But there's still a lot of discussion around that right now. So that's one piece. Um, and then the, the common level on appraisals. Some of you may have seen the letters that have, or the notices that have come out, but we'll, we'll get into that. But, so I think things were in a more beneficial place for us to make a reduction to that fund balance for this current fiscal year than, than what, where we are now looking into, into next year. I also did, uh, take a look at the number of students that we have tuitioning in. Um, assuming that they all come back again next year. We can comfortably increase that budget for incoming tuition. So I've adjusted that as well.
So most of those tuitioned is from?
North Bennington.
District.
Yep. So the nice thing with, with what you're seeing here.
So the nice thing with, with what you're seeing here on the revenue is that the highlighted line, the general state support grant. This is the demand that we're putting on the education fund. So what we're asking to be raised in taxes, and it's actually looking to be a decrease for, for next year. Based on the numbers that we have before us. So the next piece would be the tax recap calculation. So, you know, the first thing is the equalized pupils, which comes to us from the agency. We have, what I currently have is the third round that we received. And it has been labeled as frozen at this point. And because we are in union districts, we have to kind of blend all the towns together. So we have to look at Mount Anthony along with SVU ESD at the same time. So the, the MAU numbers I have in blue to kind of keep those isolated. This is the current version of their budget. And they are looking to make potentially some reductions. So I think this would probably be a worst case scenario that you're seeing right now. The taking our equalized pupils, and then the, the budget that you have before you with the offsetting revenue that I just handed out, gives us our education spending, which was the line we just had highlighted on the revenue page, which is a decrease from this current year. The homestead property yield number, this is the number that comes out from the Tax Commissioner on December 1st every year. By statute, they have to assume that any surplus in the Ed Fund gets applied to the Ed Fund next year. So that is the assumption that they made. It's in excess, they, they're estimating of over $60 million surplus in the Ed Fund. So assuming that the government and legislature votes to keep that money there. The 15, 479 is what the yield, you know, they're recommending the yield could be. Last year, when we were looking at budgets, this was below 13,000. But when the legislature actually ended up voting, it ended up just above 13. So this is a pretty significant jump in the yield. I'm a little apprehensive about it, we never know, right? But with universal meals, if they're going to continue that, funding free meals for all, for the whole state, like they've got to come up with money from somewhere, right? So this excess funding in the Ed Fund could be a potential source that they would pull from.
What line is that?
The homestead property yield is right below five, the education spending for equalized pupils. But as always, I mean, this is the, the best information that we, we've been given. So I'm, I'm sharing it with you. And so we're, you know, running with these numbers that we have. We divide our education spending by per equalized pupil by that homestead property yield. And essentially, if, if we were spending $15,479 per equalized pupil, our, our base tax rate would be a dollar. But as you can see, for SVU ESD, it's $19,245 with the budget that you have before you. That number might be alarming to some, it is on the higher side. But the excess spending threshold is, has been suspended for the next couple of years. If it were in effect, you would not be in a penalty situation until that exceeded over $22,000. So there's still that little bit of, of buffer there. So again, dividing that, we get the equalized homestead rate. And then we apply the percentages of the equalized pupils. So for each town, you can see that, that I've, I've pulled the equalized pupils from up above. And we get the percentages of, you know, how many, how many students in Bennington are SVU ESD? 40.86%, 59.14% are Mount Anthony students. So we apply those percentages to the rates up here on line seven. And then adding them together, we get an estimated tax rate across the board for each of the towns. And then the common level of appraisal comes into effect. So that's line 11. And we've, we know COVID, a lot of people coming, you know, buying properties up here out of the city. And they've been paying a premium for them. So that has really kind of put the, the market in flux. And we're seeing the common level of appraisals drop significantly. So every town, with the exception of Woodford, is up for reappraisal because we've dropped so much. So just, oh, what's doing? Just for reference. So this line here, line 11, CLAs. Last year for Bennington was 85.41%, so almost a 10, 10% drop. Pownell was 97.21, so they're actually the only one that's held that steady. Shaftesbury was 95.31, now down to 84.16. And Woodford was 98.9, it dropped down to 86.73. So essentially that's saying that our properties are undervalued, our grant list is too low. So we have to make that difference up. So we divide that equalized homestead rate by that percentage to then increase that, that tax rate amount. So that's where you come up with the, the estimated tax rates there on line 12. Comparing that to line 13. This year's tax rates. And then line 14 gives you the possible increase or decrease compared to this year with all the factors remaining. Steady, right, but we know that's not going to be the case. So best guess at this point with the information we have is there. So almost a two cent increase for Bennington, eight and a half cent decrease for Pownell. One and a quarter cent increase for Shaftesbury and five and a half for Woodford.
Quick question. When do we go into contact and negotiations with teachers?
They have a year left.
They have one year left.
So what, what I have in this budget is set based on what has been negotiated.
Are they just for negotiating now? Some of the numbers are pretty large. Purpose of the increase. So it could be the cost of adjustment for Bennington.
We are going to be without powers this year though.
Yeah. Okay.
And our, and we're currently in negotiation with all the building administrators too. That is also this year, but the teachers are all next year.
Okay. And that teacher group's the largest group of employers, money wise.
Yes, it is, yep.
So, okay, so we had to plan on that these two years for August, I'm saying.
So it'll be next year at this time, unless, unless we get ahead of it and it's already been negotiated and settled by the time, you know, we're at this point. It'll be a, it'll be an estimate. So we don't know if there's direction that the, the board would like to.
So actually, no, I made an error when I said we had a quorum at the beginning, actually, no, we need one more before. So this has been another very important information session. Let Director Gordon, for the sake of, if we had quorum right now, what would you be seeking from this board?
Either a direction as to what changes you would want to see for another, another draft? Or if you're comfortable with that, then, I mean, we, once the SU hopefully will be set next week, we can, you know, lock things in for sure. If I. Health insurance rates and dental rates still haven't been set yet. So I wouldn't anticipate an increase in the SU budget. If anything, it would go down a little bit more if that information comes in. But I think it has to, yeah.
Do you, do you understand when that was on the list?
It's late, I mean, we normally have it by now. The, the estimated rates or the rates that VIH put together have been with the Department of Federal Regulation since October. So we normally hear back mid to late December. So the fact that we haven't heard yet. And the dental rates have been flat for the last couple of years. So I did put an increase in at 2%. Huge money on dental, but still could be potential savings if, if it comes in level again, but.
So please tell me if this would meet your needs. If we were to set a Zoom-only meeting a week from now, with the hopes that at least five members of this board could attend that Zoom meeting. We could then take action on, on asking, giving a thumbs up to this. If, if that could happen, would that meet your needs and the needs of the larger system right now?
Because what, what happens once you approve the expenditure budget, then I've got to go back and get the warning ready. And then the board is going to have to approve the warning, sign it, and I've got to get it to the clerk to be posted no sooner than January 26th. And no later than February 5th, which is a Sunday. So we're really probably thinking February 3rd. So it's really the last week of January, I have to have stuff to the district clerks for all.
So if we had a Zoom meeting with at least five of us next week. That would give you a week buffer to make any adjustments that the board may ask you to make at that point, or come back for a final approval for more. Do I have that timing right? That, the timing, as I'm looking at the council in my head, that looks like it would give us what we need.
It should, barring any issues with legal review of the warnings.
Okay.
Yeah.
So would it be possible in that time, and I don't want to put anything on our superintendent's plate, but would it be possible for him to look over requests and to see if they are as equitable as possible across the?
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. So that I, at least, okay, thank you.
Okay. So Jim, if you could please ask Amy to warn a meeting before, I don't know what next Tuesday looks like for folks, but I, I imagine it would be a pretty brief meeting.
So.
I think we're trying to do.
So I know they're doing an SU meeting at 5 o'clock on the 17th to do the SU.
Their board first, their budget first. So I'm theory we could do it after that.
Okay.
Yeah. You know, I mean, like.
At that time.
You mean like do a 6 o'clock meeting on the 17th?
For the network for folks, 6 o'clock from the warmth of your own home. Put on a computer.
We, we have to have a physical location anyway, so we'll be here.
Well, we need a physical location, but only one has, person has to be there and it, it's not, doesn't have to be a board member.
Board member, yeah.
Just has to be somebody here to let the public in, so that's not a problem.
Yeah, so, and we, 6 o'clock was the time you just put out there?
Yeah, as long as the SU meeting is done, but I think that they already had their budget meeting. And I, I would anticipate their meeting's going to be pretty quick. They just, you know, they didn't, they wanted to warn a, another meeting, because they warned it as a budget meeting, not as a special meeting. So they're going to warn 5 o'clock on the 17th is a special meeting. And I assume, you know, vote the budget, so then Renee can finalize those assessments. So I, I, I would, I can't imagine it would go beyond 6 o'clock, so 6 would work.
I mean, that'll work for me, it'll work for, for folks. Okay, so let, let's shoot for that, please, Jeff, if you could have Amy.
Okay.
Or Jeff, please. And, yeah, we'll get five bucks for you at some point. I was kind of hoping Dick would have arrived by now, we could reel him in, but that's okay, that's all, sorry. Okay. In terms of the agenda for, well, we don't follow the agenda.
Is there any consensus at, of, of the members here of any changes?
So basically, what we're looking at, if I get Shaftesbury for increase for a $200,000 home, I'm looking at 34 bucks.
That's assuming, again, that everything stays as it is with, with that, the homestead yield not dropping. And that, I mean, that, a small adjustment in that number has a big, big impact.
Yeah. But, you know, basically, except for Woodford, everybody's seen a, it's in Pownell's, you know, decrease, everybody else has seen about level playing field.
Yeah, hopefully, I mean, well, Mount Anthony is meeting next Wednesday, so I won't have their final numbers in yet. But I'll, I'll probably have an updated draft. For Tuesday.
I think it's.
Sorry, is that sorry?
No, just, I.
Chris, what do you want me to label the agenda as for that 17th agenda item?
Five, SVU ESD budget meeting, please.
Yep.
Scott, go ahead.
It shouldn't be lost and, and the administrators and the work Renee, that you're doing, like, I mean, 2.86, given all the other noise that's going on. And, and where, what the types of increases you're seeing, we're seeing in any things is, I think, really emblematic of keeping things in check and.
So Mount Anthony's at about 7, 7% right now, so.
Yeah. And if I heard you right, it includes free lunches, all basically, by the district of the state, so.
Sorry, say that again?
Free lunches that pay by the district of the state now.
We, we have been in a program that it's, it's self-sustaining and it's, it's basically the, the federal program. Is paying for it. It's the other schools that don't, or I shouldn't say schools, but other districts or schools throughout the state that don't qualify for the community eligibility provision. They can opt to go into what's called Provision 2, and that's where the state money rolls in.
Which is where that 60 million, that, yes, might be used.
Here it is.
No, it's all right. So, so that concludes our informational meeting.
So you want the, you want the meeting on the 17th to be a budget meeting, not a special board meeting? Cause if it's not a special board meeting, we can't vote.
I have it listed as a special board meeting, that's how I have ordered it. And I'll put budget discussion on the agenda with action requested.
Yes, thank you, yeah, thanks for that, that point, Larry.
And this informational meeting?
Yes, this informational meeting, no, thank you very much, sir. The SVU ESD board. I would entertain a motion to modify the agenda slightly. So those of us who were called last month's meeting, we didn't have quorum until about a half hour past our starting time. Which means we needed to do a, a truncated version of our agenda. And last month, we left off the consent agenda. So I would like, I would entertain a motion to modify tonight's agenda to include action on the consent agenda from the December 13th. Please entertain that motion. So, thank you, Dick, could I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Sandy, any discussion on that, on the motion to amend our agenda as described? If you're not all those in favor of having the agenda as described, can signify by saying aye and raising your hand, or just saying aye. We're all ayeing, aye. Any opposed, the extensions, okay, have a motion carries. So that brings us to the posted agenda, the first agenda item is the pledge of allegiance. So I would like folks to stand. Can I enjoy my pledge of allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for us. Okay, so the second agenda item is public comments. So, and I see we have a number of folks joining us in the room tonight, I'm not sure if you're here for public comments. If you are, I'd invite you to stand, please let us know your name and the town in which, please. And the town in which you live, please.
Well, my name is Janet Groome, and I live in Bennington. I haven't referred what to say, but I'm glad to be here and find out more about what's going on with this board and how it functions and what the meat of the meeting is. So there's a group of us that have been meeting called Bennington Cares, and some of us are here from that. And we would like the board to know. And we would like the board to know that we here, and that's why we're showing up.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Ms. Groome. Thanks so much for coming. Anyone else? Let's speak. Okay, well, great. Well, thank you so much for coming. Thanks. Okay, so that brings us to the third agenda item, which is action on the consent agenda. So just to review the items we just added to the consent agenda. It includes the minutes from our November fifteenth meeting. The retirements of Rebecca Bratcher, who served as librarian at Powell, and Melissa Chancy, who was the teacher and head administrator for Woodford School, as well as the resignation of the crossing garden Molly Stark for the King. So those are the, the agenda items we just added to the consent agenda. So with that, with those additions, I would just note that we have two retirements, a resignation, two nominations noted in tonight's consent agenda, as well as an approval of the minutes. So starting with the minutes, any proposed additions or corrections to the November or December meeting minutes? Very good. In that case, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified in the beginning of the meeting. Thank you, Scott.
Sure, please. They're approving the whole consent agenda, but there's discussion on the contents of the last consent agenda.
Okay, sure, of course.
Yes, that we have at least two of those folks, Bratcher and Chancy, our long-term folks. Practice has been to recognize them with some kind of appreciation letter.
Great.
If we could continue that practice.
Perfect. Yeah, that's an excellent point, Dick. Thank you. So I would ask our board clerk, that's of last month. Yep. So it's Rebecca Bratcher, librarian at Powell. And Melissa Chancy.
And our public information coordinator, Katie West, is, is always available to help any board clerk who needs information for those letters, like years of service, things like that. So Jeff, are you the clerk? I'm trying.
Yeah, we chat for again.
Yeah, reach out to Katie and she, she, she'll be great with that for you.
Yeah, that was important, Dick. Thank you for having me. Thank you, Jeff. All right, so there was a, a motion made. Is there a second for the motion to approve the consent agenda? Any standing? So any discussion on approving the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that motion passes as well. So that brings us to the finance report. The treasury report was to be posted. I don't, I didn't see it as of this morning, I don't think. So that may be, may be coming. And then we have three pieces that require action. The first is the Molly Spark, Molly Stark sprinkler bids, Director Corey stepped out of the room. Superintendent Colkeen, are you able to speak to the Molly Stark sprinkler bids that we received?
Uh, no, but I know Renee is, he, I, we admitted her, Renee. Do you have the information on that?
Yes, she's stuck out of the, oh, she's.
No, she's here. She went back to her office, but I know that we led her into the meeting.
Yeah, I think this is something that Holly and her team put together. It's required work that needed to be done. So we did budget for it this year, and I'm just looking to see if it's in, yeah. So it is in the packet, kind of gives you a rundown of. There were four, four companies that were contacted to review the project. We received one bid back from Atlantic Fire Sprinkler. It is a bid for less than what we actually had budgeted, so that's a good thing. So if the board is comfortable, we would recommend that the project be awarded to Atlantic Fire Sprinkler forty six nine, and that will be covered with the local budget that we have this year.
Well, I will, I'll read the, the actual recommendation as it's worded in the, in the bid announcements. And I would ask for a motion to support that. So the motion and the recommendation is for the SVU ESD Board of Directors to award contracts to Atlantic Fire Sprinkler, Inc., and authorize expenditures in the general fund of up to forty six thousand nine hundred dollars to cover the scope of the work. Scope of the work shall be completed during the school year, with completion achieved prior to June thirtieth. I entertain a motion to that regarding this. Thank you, Dick. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Sandy. Any discussion on that? This is just from Molly Stark School, right? This is at Molly, yeah, that's right. Okay, any further discussion?
Okay, this, this company I'm very familiar with, and they do a lot of local work, top-notch stuff.
Well, and I've, I've made no secret of how big a fan of Holly I am. So if Holly is behind it as well, then I will trust that as well. So, so there we go. We have first and a second. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Great, thank you very much. So the next agenda item under finance.
It's just a general, Hanaford helps. So when the folks sign up, you know, when they purchase certain items at Hanaford, money gets collected and they turn that over on behalf of the Woodford School. There was twenty seven dollars that we received that would just go into the general fund. Melissa didn't say that she had anything specific planned for the twenty six or twenty seven dollars, but we just need the board to accept it.
So I would accept, I would entertain a motion to accept the twenty seven dollars from the Hanaford Cares for Woodford. Thank you, Dick. Can I have a second on that, please? Thanks, Scott. Any discussion on accepting this twenty seven dollar donation? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that passes as well. Thank you very much.
Make a note to Hanafords or local Hanafords or corporate Hanafords or?
I think it's corporate business.
Somewhere, but make.
Sure. I'll leave it to your discretion. How about that, Jeff? Which Hanaford office gets, it's the thing. Then talking back and forth between the agenda here, the final piece of the finance report is the annual Shasberry trustees contribution. So Director Gordon, I would turn back to you. Can you walk us through this, please?
So annually, the, the Board of Trustees and Shasberry offers basically a donation to be used at Shasberry Elementary School. So this year, they've offered one thousand seven hundred twenty-three dollars and ninety-one cents. I will work with Principal Johnson on how he wants to expend that money and if we need to set it aside for a specific use so that it doesn't roll into fund balance. But this is, it's an annual thing that we typically see from, from the trustees.
Great. And just for those of you who didn't see it in the packet, it's signed by a Robert Stewart, which maybe the members from Shasberry can tell me if I'm pronouncing that correctly or not, but Mr. Stewart is the one who signed that on behalf of the trustees. So is there any questions for Director Gordon regarding this particular action? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to accept this, this gift from the trustees of Shasberry, please. Thank you, Dick. We'll call Scott. Second, any discussion on this? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the gift from the Shasberry trustees, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. And Jeff, who would like, please, also write a letter. Thanks.
Thank you. Chris, I'm gonna, I'll run the warrant up to momentarily for everybody to sign that was approved in the consent agenda. Thank you.
I saw a moment ago that someone is trying to get, to get permission to come into the meeting. And I don't know who's managing this.
Yeah, we're watching. So yes, thank you. So we'll keep watching.
I, I see nobody waiting right now trying to get in. Who was that?
It was Sheila Mullin.
Yeah, oh, I did.
She was already admitted?
She's here. She's here. You can't see everybody on the, there's a whole actual bunch of people here. You just can't see them because their cameras are on.
If they're on their camera on, they will not show up on the big screen. But I can look at, I can look at the roster of who here, and I did click her in. She is present.
Thank you.
All right, so that exhausts agenda item number four. So Jeff, agenda item number five is the superintendent's report. So Superintendent Colkeen, you have the floor.
I asked the, the chair to indulge me. Could we take something out of order? Could we let Principal Colley go first? The agenda is a little skewed, and if you remember, last month, we had her waiting patiently for us, and we ran out of quorum time, and we weren't able to hear her report. So she's graciously here again this weekend. I would like to let her give her report and then release her for the evening if the board has no objection.
Do I have any objection to that? I certainly have none. So please, Principal Colley, the floor is yours, please.
Great. Thank you so much, because I do actually have an AIM meeting, Adults Interested in Monument, at six PM. So they're going to be happy that I will be on time in the lobby. Thank you so much for allowing me to share some of the great things that go on. Welcome and Happy New Year. I hope everyone is doing well. I'm pleased to spotlight some things happening in the Monument community. The school is abuzz. Yes, that is a pun intended, with visits by guardians and volunteers and family engagement opportunities during the day, as well as after school to provide a variety of times that families can participate. Field trips are occurring and events are in abundance, resulting in a full calendar for us here. We have a full year of scheduled family engagement opportunities. Some of them also include opportunities for families to come in during our English Language Arts and Math instruction opportunities, which is great, because not everybody can all, always come during the day or at night. This gives them an opportunity to choose what works best for them as a family. I've also invited families for Sundays on Mondays. I do that traditionally in the beginning of the year. This provides an opportunity for families to come in on Mondays with their learner, and they get to meet other families, and then they make connections, and sometimes they get together. And they can create some playdates with their learners and their children. And of course, we're back to hosting family meals by the Abbey Group. That was wonderful to see happen. We had our welcome back barbecue. We have our AIM meetings in person, which is so wonderful, too. Our world traveler trips, we just went on one today. That's our second for the year. We had our holiday concert in December. And we also have after-school clubs, which are in full swing. We have some offerings. We're going to have two sessions, our winter and then our spring session. Some of the opportunities that we're providing for our learners include cooperative games, science club, a band club, cross-country skiing with our Prospect Mountain Partnership. We're so excited that they've invited us to do that. So in, to accomplish all of this, we really need staff members, and I'm pleased to report that we've been responding successfully to daily absences, leaves of absence with the support of all of our colleagues. They're amazing. They pitch in for one another. And the result of their collective support is the continuation of daily programming, instruction, and learning. Paraprofessionals and professionals are also engaging in a variety of professional learning expectations and opportunities. There is an abundance of them. They focus on supporting everyone's individual professional growth, as well as our goals as an SU, which is very important, and our continuous improvement plan and how they all align. Staff members are doing an amazing job collaborating, working together, regularly teaming to support the uniqueness of each of our students, their learning profiles. And we do that through our tiered instruction in social emotional learning, English Language Arts, and mathematics. Our winter benchmarking, March, marking window has opened. Our kindergarten through second grade are engaging in the Fast Bridge Assessment, and our third through fifth grades are completing the measures of academic progress. I could go on and on about the great work that's happening, the amazing staff, the learners and families, but I want to be mindful of your time. So I'm thanking you for letting me go ahead of the schedule, and I hope I've provided a glimpse into our community this evening. I love serving this community, and always I thank you, the board members and the community for your support every day.
Thank you, Principal Colley.
You're welcome.
Board members, have any questions for Principal Colley?
Maybe a statement. I'm so appreciative to hear all the good work that's happening. It's so refreshing and heartwarming. So thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome.
Principal Colley, can I just ask, and if you don't know, if you don't choose to answer, that's fine. How many years have you been principal at Mon- Monument?
It's your first year, right, Donna?
Yeah. Experienced, as we call it, right, Jim? Um, I believe this is my, um, I think it's my eleventh year. Yes.
That's excellent.
And I do want to share, I'm so excited. I'm going to be a grandmother for the third time.
Congratulations. That's great.
We just got that news over the holiday, so I'm just tickled pink, or maybe blue.
Thanks again, and good luck at the AIM meetings tonight. Hopefully, I, hopefully you'll continue to do great things. Thanks so much.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Principal Colley.
And thanks for letting me bump you.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, bye-bye.
So we'll now move into Superintendent Colkeen, Superintendent's report, please.
Thank you for allowing me to join you remotely today. As some of you may know, I'm once again battling COVID, and my voice is kicking in and out, but I will do, do the best I can. I want to stop by talking to you about our former central office, the Beach Street School. You know, we've talked about it at previous meetings, and I told you that we're moving forward with that process. The building, the interior of the building has been painted, new carpet has been installed. I, I I can't thank Holly Anderson, our Director of Facilities and Operations, enough for, for her work. Expedited work to get this done, and the cooperation of the town of Bennington, particularly Paul Danzaro, you may know that name. He used to be at MAU, and now he works for the town of Bennington for, you know, touring that facility and get it back in line and making sure that, you know, we're, we're all up to code for using that building. So I asked Dr. Kate Abbott to come this evening to give some exciting news about that building that happened this week. So go ahead, Kate. Dr. Abbott, sorry.
Thank you. And I just want to also reiterate our appreciation for Holly and the work of the buildings teams. So we, the building is up and functioning now. We have had our first learner begin some time in the building in a very positive manner. We've brought in some materials and had a lot of sensory activities, and we are swapping out staff with some of our on-point center, as well as Bennington Elementary staff that are visiting to support the learners that we have, the learner that we have there. So it's been a very positive, slow start. We're not trying to fill the center in any shape or form, but we are able now to meet some of the needs of the learners that we have in our elementary community to, in a safe and supportive manner, to allow them to continue their learning while they're working through some clinical assessments and such. So thank you so much for that opportunity.
Just a quick question here, just for the people who don't know what's happening there, because I don't know what's going on there. Could you just explain to the people in the room, I'm guessing everybody in the corner, the public doesn't know, what's the plan is for the building?
Do you want to go, Kate, do you want me to?
Well, I can give an overview. So we have a handful of learners. The vast majority of our learners in our schools are, have no referrals at all, but we have a very small percentage of children that have some significant trauma or that are working through some challenges right now with their mental health. And so those learners have a very, in, in the last couple of months, had had a number of disciplinary concerns and or mental health needs that are impacting their learning or the learning of others in their classrooms. And so to, we have looked at using the space at the old Beach Street School to provide ongoing education and counseling and clinical services for the learners to stabilize them so that they can once again re-enter their school buildings in a safe manner. So it's a very small, we are looking for a very small number of learners, so about fifteen total learners in individual spaces within the Beach Street Center. We have a handful of staff right now. We have three staff assigned. And as the need arises, we'll be able to program for children at that site to allow for safety and regulation. And then once they're safe and regulated, they'll be able to potentially return to their home school, or if they are in need of a higher level of care, they might be moving on to more intensive treatment, such as a residential placement.
Thank you very much. That was a nice overview.
Yeah, and Jeff, thanks for giving us that opportunity to explain that question. And you know, this, this is a, a intervention that we have needed, and we were searching for sites, and somehow this building became available to us. So what I will have to come back, you know, our Director in Finance and Operations, you can understand, is completely overwhelmed right now with budget. What I will come back as soon as we're done the budget process, I'll come back. As soon as we're done the budget process, I'll come back to this, this board because it is your building. And how um, you know, the finances are going to work around this, but right now I, I consider that we're in. Emergency mode to get this, you know, up and running. And uh, it, you know, the costs, I mean, no secret would be born between. The MAU and the Union Elementary District because that's, you know, that's who who would be using it. Um, and as I said at previous meetings, you know, the alternatives. Because if we didn't have this facility ourselves, would be out of district placement. Which can be exorbitant in cost and it's not productive, particularly for how long. Students are on, could be in transportation mode and the time lost there. Previously, we were sending students to far away as Pittsfield, Massachusetts, Rutland, uh Bradlboro. So the fact that we can. Offer some of these interventions here within our own district, which um. Will make transition back to their sending school, which is the ultimate goal, um that much easier. So um, I I can't thank um Dr. Abbott and her staff. Uh, Holly Anderson, her staff and your, your, your um Union Elementary District Maintenance Staff. Who really stepped up and understood the uh urgency uh to get this uh up and running. One student's a start. Um, Doc, that was a little apologetic to me that it was only one. I said, it's a start. It's a great start and um. So what, you know, so important, um but I I will keep you updated. As as this transition site um progresses. And Kate, I like what you, you called it the Beach Street Center. I don't know, we haven't really. Talked about a name yet, but that might be very appropriate to honor the building uh that it was, you know. Any, any questions from anybody on on that startup?
I'm just curious about procedure. Are we allowed to ask questions?
So.
At what point?
Yeah, so uh it's an excellent question. Perhaps I should have said it at the very beginning. So the way that the policies are set up uh for the SVU EST. And it's reflecting somewhat the open meeting law statutes as well. Public comment is the time to make comments. Um, there, there's not typically an opportunity for members of the public to ask questions or to add agenda items. And that strictly has to do with with the transparency of the board. The idea being, we don't want folks necessarily to arrive. At the beginning of a meeting to talk about big issues that the rest of the public maybe didn't have the heads up, we're going to be discussed ahead of time. Um, with that said, uh, I think we could probably entertain some questions. That's. We want to be nice folks and really happy that you're here, so we don't want to discourage. Yeah, we don't want to discourage your participation. Uh, yeah, as Jeff just said, we may not be able to answer those questions, uh but I think it's certainly possible to ask them as long as. You don't, you know. You couldn't.
To people who are new to the how board operates, we should offer this to like, so it is public comment. It's not necessarily. Public questions and the chair just alluded to that, that we may not have an answer for you. Tonight, what happens with when you ask a question, it sometimes then leads to a future agenda item or to us responding. At a future meeting, but um it's, it's not designed that there's back and forth conversation between the board. And an audience and um. For a number of reasons. So just as long as everybody understands that, that you may ask a question that we may say to you, we'll take that under advisement and get back to you.
So Superintendent Cocain, I'm, I'm trying to recall if. North Bennington graded students can access on point. And if so, could those state, could those students also access? The B Street Center? I see Doctor Abbott nodding your head. With, with the entry of Sandgate and Arlington into the SU, could it also be available for their students?
Yes, but probably with a tuition um structure.
Right, right, because they're at, okay, okay, thank you. I just.
These are all, these are all growth questions as we, as we develop this, this, and I, I do. Believe there could be a need from those communities because we have opened up. You know, some of our other schools and 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 also the other way too. Some of our students go to Arlington as a, you know, a smaller setting or something like that, so. Um, you know, some of that comes down to what happens in an IEP setting and what is the best recommendation of the team.
Sure.
For that, for that student.
Well, I, I'm personally very excited for this, to have this support as part of the sort of menu of supports for our students. You know, I agree. It's been, it's been a long time coming for us to have that sort of specialized setting. Right here, right here in town, in our community as opposed to having our students subjected to all that transportation time, which is difficult. It can make, it can make for. Uh, sort of rejoining their, their homeschools difficult too if they're, if they're used to that. Level of travel, it can come down to that. So yes.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll try if I'm doing it correctly or not, but I, I have two things that I'm wondering about.
Should say who, you gotta identify yourself.
I'm Mary Ann Monley and I live here in Bennington.
Yep.
And I live in a um, why don't? Um, I live in Bennington. Uh, the uh, the, what I'm wondering is that when the staff from Benell. Goes to Beach Street. Are they being pulled away from other activities at Benell or are you using new staff positions to staff? Um, at, at the Beach Street Facility. Curious about that.
So again, I, I think we'll, we'll give a report back to the board on where this is being staffing. I don't, I don't. I, I know it, it seems like I'm being evasive, but um. Unless the chair.
My thought is also the superintendent Cocain, because we're talking one student right now and we need to be respectful of that student's privacy, maybe two. It, it might give too much personal information away and aid in the identification of that one student if we were to talk about specific staff that we're.
Because, because I'm not, I, I want to be clear. I'm not saying the student is from Bennington Elementary School or the staff is from Bennington Elementary School. I honestly do not know where that student's from. And I wouldn't be, for the reason the chair mentioned, I wouldn't be comfortable uh doing that because I could violate someone's privacy and violate that, yeah.
A related question.
Sure, please.
Um, I would suspect that you're aware that in the community at large, there's a sense that there's a. A huge problem at Bennington Elementary School and um to hear that there's not. Is, is really interesting to us and um, so I'm just wondering about that. Discrepancy of the things that we might be hearing in the public about the conditions in the school and. How you're describing that this is really a relatively small number of students and that you really have it under control.
So I think, and and certainly Dr. Abbott, Superintendent Cocain, please feel free to jump in and and correct anything that I'm about to say. I think there are a couple of things in play. Um, so I, I believe the, the referrals that we're speaking of right here are specifically referrals for students. Who require sort of a separate learning space for those mental health interventions, for those, those evaluations to occur. In as least a disruptive way to as many students as possible. So when we're talking about referrals, that's what we're referring to, not necessarily disciplinary referrals or what we might have. For to us to get accepted to the principal's office, like that kind of thing.
And you need to refer us just to go to Pittsfield and Rutland.
Right, yeah, sort of out of district.
Exactly, out of district.
Um, I would say that I, I think part of the, the public awareness or growing public awareness for, for what's happening about. Benny's Elementary School is due in no small part to the, to a VT Digger article that was out a month and a half ago or so. Um, I would just note that there were conversations that I had with the author of that report. There were conversations that superintendent had with the author of that report. That were not reflected in that article. Um, and I think both superintendent and I shared with the author that, the reporter who, who filed that story. All of the various uh supports, interventions, services that are available, not only at Benell. That was the subject of the story, but at many of our elementary schools. That wasn't reflected there. So. Are there, are there issues at Benell? Sure, absolutely. Um, is the picture. As dire as was painted in the VT Digger article? I don't think so. And it's certainly not a matter of students are doing fine or the cops are doing well. Right, there's a, there's a vast middle ground between those two extremes, um where most of the, most of the needs are made in-house. And unfortunately, that wasn't always picked up in the VT Digger article and and I. I would say that the, the title of that article really was not uh reflective of the. The guts of that article, the guts of the article, I think, give a pretty measured report of the entire situation at Benell and in the community. Um, the article, the title is pre-click maybe, and you know, was designed to sort of draw people in. I guess all of this is to say is, there's a lot of good things happening at Benell and a lot of in-house services and supports that are present at Benell that just weren't. Reflected in that article. Um, I don't know if that answered any of your concerns, Mary Ann, or not, but um. It's certainly Superintendent Cocain or Dr. Abbott or or.
I think that the administration and the staff at all our schools are. Have witnessed and experienced some behaviors from students, again, a small number because we do track the data, small number of students that. We haven't seen before. Now, I, I think that's, that, that's an accurate statement. This intervention, which is what we were calling um, uh, the service that is going to be provided at Beach Street. Is, is one tool that we have to help address that. Um, but as the chair. Um, reported, the, the amount of staff in each building from, and from social workers to uh interventionists to coaches. Um, is. You'd be surprised when you look at our staff days and how many people in a building, and I'm not talking just Bennington Elementary School. Are not what, you know, you would think of when we were all in school as, you know, the, as classroom teachers and a guidance counselor and a principal. The, the non-classroom side of our staffing has increased dramatically in all our buildings. And this is not just a, you know. Uh, there's great things happening at Bennington Elementary School and there's great staff, dedicated staff members at Bennington Elementary School. Um, these, these issues, the Vermont Digger did the story on Bennington Elementary School. They could have easily written it about a few other schools. Um, in our, in our district or within this, anywhere else in the state of Vermont that are um. That are dealing with these uh child behavior issues that, you know, um. That are escalated, elevated in a way that we haven't seen in the past, particularly even at a young, at a younger age. Um, so that this, this, I just want to acknowledge that part, right, you know, right up front. So we know it. Um, and then I'll, this is part of my, my report to the board, but it's worth mentioning right now. We're also, you know, we're working with our teachers association. Uh, we have a safety committee with them. We met in fact, again, today. Um, we used a process that we call a problem of practice. This was our second day because we're trying to get input. From as many people um for offer solutions. Um, so we meet with the union and. You know, it's, here, here's the problem. What's the solution right now? You know, we, we know what the problems are. We're hearing the problems. Just like obviously you have. So I, I did get an email that you were meeting last um. Sunday at eleven thirty, I, from, from a, from a parent. And I responded to them because they invited me to come to the meeting. I respond, so I'll say this to you because I don't know if you got the message that was in my email. Um, I wasn't available to, to go to that at eleven thirty Sunday morning, but um. I am willing, if you, if you would like to come in and meet with our administration and in a less formal way. And talk to what, I, I don't know what you're, what you discussed at your meeting, but like I said, you know, this, this is an issue that we. We want to hear from everyone. So if you have some suggestions, you have some things that you think you might want us to hear, I would love. I would love to meet with you. So I don't know who is considered. That you're organizer or leader of the group that could be a contact point, but um. I know that our administration would be, would love to sit down to you and have, with you and have that discussion. We're not, you know, we're not turning away. Um, any um input um to help us um. Run our school safely and to keep our staff safe, so.
That's terrific to hear and thank you.
Yeah, so I, I don't know if you knew that I emailed back or you got, if you knew that I responded, I couldn't attend on Sunday, but if there's another time that you're meeting.
And just to underscore what Janet said, you know, we're interested in this because we're interested in knowing what citizens like us can do to help.
Yep.
Um, so we would really welcome an opportunity to sit down. So thank you.
Well, I think being here tonight would send a signal to our staff that they do have support in the community as they. It's a tough job being an educator right now and our, our principals, our teachers, our support staff. Uh, you know, so I think sometimes just even knowing that they have support in the community um can be. Can be heartwarming and I appreciate that. So I look at you as a partner to, to help us um. As we work through this and I welcome that.
Thank you.
So somebody emailed me tomorrow with the, or tonight with who, who should be the contact, so how we could set up, you know, a meeting, one of you designate who your. Your, your leader is, so. Um, Dr. Abbott, anything more to um add on Beach Street?
No, just how thankful I am that of all the work that's been done in the last honestly three to four weeks has been amazing. So thanks, Holly Anderson and her team very much.
Yeah, well, you and your team also deserve a lot of credit too. Um, you know, we're a big ship and sometimes it takes. A little time to turn the ship, the turnaround time on this. Um, uh, I have not witnessed uh the speed before and how that works, so thank you. The other, you know, thing besides from that and meeting with the union on our safety committee, which came from a result of negotiations. And uh, we made a report out to the board last May and the decision was made. Uh, to continue meeting with those boards and uh continue meeting with the safety committee, which I think is, is really been productive again. Uh, similar to like with community groups, the more input I get, the more information I get, um, the more um. Informed I am when I make decisions. Um. And I want, I want to applaud the, the union president um for also supporting that and working with us. Uh, Superintendent, uh Assistant Superintendent Laura Redrow was at that meeting today and I think um. The collegiality that came out of that meeting um was um. A pleasant uh surprise when we meet, uh, you know. The nature of particularly in negotiations, it's sometimes we're on opposite sides so that when we, when we get to um. To being, working together on a problem, uh, it, it encourages me to keep going. Um, but speaking of negotiations, we did begin um. Negotiations for the um. With the, the principals, their contract, this came up, some of you heard this in the budget meeting, but we weren't all there, so I'll repeat it. Um, we've begun negotiations with the administrators, that's principals and vice principals. Their contract expires at the end of this year. Teacher's contract does not expire at the end of this year, but support staff does, so. Uh, that's the next, uh, we've had some preliminary discussions with their leadership, but we haven't begun active negotiations with the support staff yet. Um, but that, that, that will be starting and um doesn't impact this board, but um Arlington. Um, both their support staff and teachers' contract expires this year, so we'll be in negotiations with them. So um between. This is a. Really busy time of year. I, I am. I am blessed with uh an excellent team to help me uh navigate all these issues. You, you had your budget meeting early with one of our stars. I can't thank um Director Finance Renee Gordon. Uh, enough. This is a very stressful, stressful time um for her, right, as we go through this. Budget season because there's a clock ticking of when we have to have all this work done. And um her thoroughness and her attention to detail, second to none. So I just want, want to thank her. Uh, and her team, it's, it's not just her, but all the people that work with her in her department. Um, to get these reports and she met with you tonight and tomorrow night it's off to Arlington and then back quickly here. For North Bennington. So it just, it just continues. Um, that's my report. Chairperson, uh, any questions from the board for me?
Is that new program, Jim, that Dr. Abbott started? Has that come back through rather quickly? I mean, it's just right, it's surprising to hear last month. So is that more through SVSU board?
It was brought to this board last month.
Okay, so it's just.
Yeah. About the use of the building, yes.
Fast, so.
Yeah, look, and just taking a peek at the minutes, it was, there was the discussion, there was the outline of the hopes and how it could be used. Again, we met on the thirteenth of December. Permission, we, we, the board gave permission to investigate it and execute it could be.
They will execute, yeah. With vacation there.
Vacation there to boot, right. So nice job, Jim. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that brings us.
Thank you for your support and the use of your building.
Uh, that brings to the chair report. Uh, so just, just two quick bits. I'm gonna um reiterate what Superintendent noted, just. Applaud your record for all of your work. Um, e- even, even with the, the clear, concise way she's able to spell it out, it's, it's abundantly obvious how. Complicated school funding is. Uh, it's a. It's a bear and I, I've been known as for a hand to this point. And I, I would still be hard pressed to accurately describe it 100%. So the fact that she was able to do it in such a way where I feel like I can at least hold my arms around it. It's a wonderful piece of work that she's able to do. And so, and I know that, that the countless hours that go into all the individual schools and then adapting it all into the SU budget. So big thanks to Director Gordon and her staff. And also just want to make another plug that we do have a few board vacancies coming up. Not as many as we initially thought we were going to have, actually. So initially I thought that both, that both terms of the Bennington reps were up as well as one of the Shaftberry reps term being up. But of those three, only one Bennington rep is needed. So to our, our guest this evening, there is a vacancy coming up to represent Bennington on this board. If that was something that any of you reached it in, you can get petitions from the town clerk to get on the ballot. There's also a one slot in Woodford coming vacant and there's one slot in Pendle that's coming vacant. So I did reach out to the building principals to ask if, who they knew who might be good for the boards. Certainly anyone watching at home or anyone who knows anyone and wants to speak to people that are serving on this board, the opportunity is, is coming at town meeting day this year. So that, that's it for the board report. I, I do want to note one last thing before we move on to our la, our next agenda items. And typically we do not have a board meeting in February. It's sort of a, a, a recognition of the fact that building administrators and the superintendent's office have just exhausted themselves in negotiation, in budget season and so on. So we may not be meeting in February after all. And I frankly wish I was a little bit more prepared for this, but I want to turn attention to Dick France. So Dick France is one of these people who, one of the folks who is not running for reelection whose board term is up. And I think, I think I have it right. Dick has served in one capacity or another on school boards in this community for 2,000 years, I think. And, and Dick, Dick served in the Woodford boards. Level, served the, I mean, you level, he has chaired several boards. He's sat on a number of committees. I, I think pound for pound, year for year, Dick may have done more for the students of Bennington County, I think more than any other person that I can certainly think of. And, and Dick is going to be taking a well-deserved break from serving on school boards. But Dick, I, I, I found your, the, the example that you set for board members, the example you set for community members and how they can continue to be active, not only in their communities but for their learners, has just been exemplary. It's been wonderful to see. And I'm very grateful for all the time that we've been able to serve on boards together. And just thank you so much for your dedication throughout the years. And I would, if you want to say anything, I would give you the opportunity to do that now. Otherwise I would just simply say thank you to you for all that you've done over the years.
I think it's time for me to move on. I asked my wife how long I've been doing this and she said, well, you started such and such. And with a little bit of time off here and there, I guess it's something around 30 years. And after a while, you get a little rusty and cranky and forgetful. And I've found over the years that there are some extremely intelligent, very thoughtful, very committed people that serve on boards and get a chance to work with administrative people who are in the same mode. And I can't keep up with that anymore, really. So thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Dick. I'm sure you will still win.
There you go, I hadn't thought about it.
That's a great idea.
We'll see you March after all, Dick. Okay, so the, the eighth agenda item is the FYI, which includes the budget status report and student enrollment numbers, which were to be posted. The ninth agenda item is executive session. Just for, for the folks who are joining us, the executive session is a, is, is statute provides for exemptions to the open meeting law for certain key things to be discussed. Tonight, for instance, we're moving into an executive session to allow for the consideration of the appointment or employment or evaluation of public employees and to discuss the academic records or suspension or discipline of students, all of which is, is confidential and held as such. So we will not be taking any action coming out of executive session with the exception of adjourning our meeting. So if you'd like to stick around and watch how we enter a meeting, you're welcome to do so. Yes.
I have one question. I tried to research. How, how do you find out the job description of being on the board? Good question. What, what is your responsibility? You know, I've heard it's twice a month or something, but, you know, I looked at your minutes. But is there a job description and where do you find that as a, as a citizen or a community member?
You know, and I don't recall if there is a job description or not, but I can give you a, a thumbnail of what, what it is that, that board member sees. So.
Yeah, right.
So the board, the board has a regular meeting once a month. And its, its function is to, is a couple of things. One, we are the, the body that's responsible for approving budgets, approving budgets to be put up to vote, I should say. We're the body that's responsible for evaluating the superintendents. The board is not in charge of any of the, the school employees, the ESU employees, except for the superintendent. The superintendent reports to the board. In a situation like ours, the superintendent has a number of boards to answer to, as well as Supervisory Union. So it's not as simple as what I just said, but that, that's the main thing about it. We have a responsibility for getting updates with regard to student success and then what's happening within our schools and how we can best support that. People should chime in if, if I'm forgetting things I'm forgetting. There are some training requirements that are against constant statute for, for board members. And opportunities come up that, you know, to, to make that happen, that's easy enough. And then there, there's lots of committee work that needs to be done. We send representatives to Supervisory Union. We have representatives on the policy committee. We have representatives on bargaining committees. We have representatives on the food committee. So, so there's, it's not just one meeting per month. There's lots of other work that, you know, gets distributed amongst, amongst folks who are, who serve on those boards.
But how many are there?
There are two reps in each of our member towns. So that's Bennington, Pendle, Shaftberry and Woodford. We oversee six elementary schools in those four towns. Three in Bennington, one in Shaftberry, one in, one in Pendle. As you saw tonight, we typically have a report from one of our building principals. We'll, we'll come forward and let us know what's happening in their schools. Back before COVID, we actually held meetings in the schools, but we decided instead to move sort of to centralized location. That includes, that makes it easier for folks to, to sort of participate via, via online platforms. We have information from the superintendent. We have information on the superintendent. And it's just superintendent and other, other directors here at the central office. Yeah, so I mean, it's an oversight board. No one board member has any real authority. It's only when we are congregated as a board that we have any real authority whatsoever. We're bound by Robert's Rules of Order as well as Paul's, or Title 16 in the Vermont statutes annotated, that's the educational statutes. There are SVU policies that are, that we need to follow. There are also SVU ESD-specific policies that we need to follow. So it's, it's, it's all of that. But primarily it's community oversight.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
The budget's also, yeah. So at 4:30, for instance, today, we met with Director Gordon, who's the Director of Finance for the Supervisory Union. And she laid out what the budget will likely look like coming out of the SVU ESD. So we need to approve that in order to warrant it for a public vote. So it's another thing to be doing. Superintendent Culkin, what do I?
If I could chime in, if, if you have access to the internet, the Vermont School Board Association does have, if you go to their pull-down menu.
I knew it was out there, yes.
It has something for prospective board members. And, you know, and I think it's titled Thinking About Running. I haven't, so that is on the Vermont. Vermont School Board Association website. They have, they have a section for prospective board members and I think it's a couple of, series of little shot videos that you can watch.
Do you, do you post this somewhere other than mentioning it at the meeting? But if there's an opening or?
So on the, the SVU homepage, it shows the, you, there's a dropdown menu that, that lists all the different school boards that operate within the Supervisory Union. And within those menus, you see all the people who sit on the boards, including when their terms are up. As we noted, they're not always accurate because as I said before, I thought my term was up, Scott, but his, I think I told Scott his term was up. His clerk corrected him as, as in our town, so correct me.
How long is the term?
Three years.
And you can resign if you feel like.
You cannot resign, I'm sorry. I suppose you can resign if you really wanted to. Every once in a while, there will be a vacancy that occurs on the board. Sandy Foster, for instance, is currently sitting on this board because she was appointed to it because a vacancy occurred for a Pendle seat. But she's running again, so the folks at Pendle can actually vote for her this time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for asking. Great, so in that case, I would entertain a motion to enter into executive session. And if that motion passes, we will invite you to wait hallway. And again, you can come back in if you want to see how we adjourn, but it's.
In the executive session, Mr. Chairperson, I need you to invite Chair Director Nick Galt and myself into the meeting.
Yep, very good.
And I don't know if.
Cat TV is celebrating 30 years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next 30 years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.